There are two more years remaining in the phase out, phase in, excuse me, of the school funding formula which results in $650,000?
Per year for the next two years.
Increase. We know there is a commission that the governor has formed regarding the school funding formula. Right now Coventry is a beneficiary of the phase in and the formula and we ask you again to protect us.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Coventry.
As Mr. Cabell said, Coventry has been receiving approximately $650,000 for the last few years. One thing that the Superintendent's Association is concerned about, the current formula is under revision now, possible revision, is that all districts that are receiving additional funding be held heartless. We're planning on that additional funding going forward, so if that formula change now could be detrimental, could be detrimental to Coventry.
Yes, Representative Bob.
If I may address that, thank you, Mr. Coventry. I'm one of the group of legislators, we met yesterday, it was an organizational meeting to discuss proposed educational legislation for this coming year. And you're right, there is, the governor did assemble with the school funding formula. And you may have heard in the papers that a number of the, I'll say the urban areas have sent a letter to the governor, to the commission requesting more money for their English and language learners and their more expensive special ed students. I don't think that commission wants to add money because frankly, there isn't any money to add. So what I think they're asking for is to take some of the money from the winning communities, of which Coventry is one. So I can assure you that we are all vigilant and will certainly protect that good money from Coventry.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments regarding that matter? Okay. Number 10. Educational items. School superintendent, Michael.
Yes. Thank you. I do have several other items, just briefly. Title 16, educational law, is currently, we're hoping that we, the Superintendent's Association, myself, that that could be revised and look at sections that are no longer relevant, particularly the advent of technology the last few years. There are many sections that could be eliminated, certainly streamline language, and we're looking for your support to begin that work on Title 16. Three other items. Social media is becoming increasingly disruptive in many school environments, including here at Coventry. We're looking to have support to amend the limits of our authority to investigate social media, particularly when it becomes approaching criminal behavior or disruptive to the school environment. It's not unusual to have Monday morning to have a parent come in with a stack of papers of an item or something that's happened over the weekend that causes havoc in the school. We are limited by what we can do because it didn't happen in school. Also, it's a double edged sword because it would take a tremendous amount of time, but it is affecting the educational environment in school and it is an area of concern. Thirdly, driver's education, this is minor, but we're requesting district oversight of driver education programs. Currently, the way I understand it, teachers are hired through C C R I, at least for Coventry. And building administrators have no authority or ability to monitor that teacher's behavior or performance, or performance or the behavior. We're looking for a district oversight for that. So currently, some districts are not offering driver's education because they don't have control over how the quality of the program in their buildings. And lastly, school safety planning. Several years ago, through tragedy at Sandy Hook, Coventry along with many other districts did a lot to improve school safety. We certainly made our buildings much more secure. We've been working with Colonel McDonald and plan to continue in January to revise our safety procedures and protocol. Concerned that it appears, the appearance that there is no oversight at the state level anymore. It certainly was in 2013 or 12 when the tragedy occurred. Specifically, it appears that RE/MAT has backed away from oversight of school safety plans. We're seeking your assistance to strengthen and define the responsibility of school safety plans.
I can certainly address the social media aspect. Probably five years ago it started, there was a very large anti-bullying campaign that I'm confident you all are very much aware of, you should probably utilize it as a very resourable tool. But as you pointed out, there are some flaws to it. As a member of the Judiciary Committee, I heard a lot of testimony over several years relative to trying to expand the scope of what would be available to not just law enforcement but to administrators in schools as yourself. And it was met with such strong opposition from the A C L U and other civil liberties, if you will, minded groups, that it was really, it was D O I. It just met with such fierce opposition. That doesn't mean that we cannot try it again. That doesn't mean that we cannot try a different approach. I just wanted you to understand that there is history on the table, on the books with regards to this. There are some valid issues with that, but I do believe that there are workarounds. And yes, you're absolutely correct, and we've seen it, on the answer, we've seen horrendous situations with exactly what you described, the Monday morning stack of harassing and maligning and exchanges between these people. So relative to Title 16, that's a resolution. If you guys, together with your wishes are, we can submit the legislation. I can't speak with a sentence item, it's easy enough on the House. Driver's Ed is the same thing, just let us know what it is you want in the form of resolution, that's easy enough for us to act as, or place in as a bill. I would need more background and I'll defer to my colleagues who are maybe more knowledgeable than I am on the evolution of the school program relative to safety. So I'll defer to that.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Representative Noon.
Yes, Mr. Superintendent, the, I think it was 2013 we enacted legislation that required a certain amount of lockdown drills in a school. It was either 13 or 14, I'm pretty sure it was 13. Now, you're saying that the Rhode Island E M A was initially more interested in working with the school department and lately they haven't, they haven't had any input or cooperation with the way you've implemented those? Because I thought that the lockdown drills were mandated a certain amount per year, at least one, I think it was, it wasn't anything, two of them?
Yes, we continue to do those and we do our annual report.
Were those overseen in the past by Rhode Island E M A?
Not much, no, we do the annual report through R I, against to them, but no, not directly on site though.
So what type of input from E M A are you looking for?
The evolution of safety plans, Colonel and I have been talking about this, there's different formats that come to light, different philosophies of how to handle them. And it doesn't seem that there's a unified statewide model or support to the product going forward. So where three years ago, it was certainly on the front burner and many districts were actively involved, it seems to have taken a backseat.
Has the Superintendent's Association gotten, do they have any ideas in mind? Are they looking for like a template for operating these lockdown drills or is it just general information relative to safety planning in a school that they're looking for?
I think they're looking for more direct oversight by RE/MAT. Direct involvement. It doesn't seem like there, there it still is. So in other words, it's 36 separate districts. It's not overseen by one central idea or philosophy.
I mean, I think the initial intent with the legislation was to not be too burdensome to each individual district, but if you're, I mean, if that's the position of Coventry and possibly of other school districts, then I would ask that maybe you could, maybe we could set up some type of a meeting between the Superintendent's Association and the Rhode Island E M A and maybe work something out rather than have to address it through some type of legislation. And maybe something that can just be done through, you know, some type of court of need to get everybody on the same page.
I can certainly pass out a law. There was a subcommittee of the Superintendent's Association that was very active at one time and they still want to be active, but it doesn't seem that there's a receiving party at the other end, so.
That's something maybe we can facilitate for you or at least help push along, maybe we can work with the governor's office and try to make something like that happen.
Thank you, appreciate that. My concern, Representative, is the what happened in Los Angeles today and what occurred in New York City and what may be happening in Chicago and Boston. Yes, today, Los Angeles, they shut the schools down, they had to shut the schools down because they received the threat. This really should be on the front burner, and I feel as a school committee member, because what we need is consistency between the state and the local, local law enforcement authorities and federal marshals to make sure that there is a plan and that it's consistent statewide because all it takes is one call. That's my fear is that Mr. Coventry is going to get a call, Mrs. Packnor will get a call and before you know it, we're all getting calls, saying that we have to shut the schools down because then it becomes the president comes in, involved in the town manager, and we have to shut the schools down because we receive the threat district-wide in our school department.
I agree with you 100%. Obviously, children's safety is of utmost importance.
Thank you.
So I think that this is something that we should probably get working on this week.
Is there any other comments regarding the Superintendent's requests or comments to us? We all, Representative, I thought you raised your hand up one time.
Yeah, I did have to leave that because I was a little bit confused because it's unusual for a local entity to want more state involvement as opposed to less. So I guess I'm just confused because I thought that those plans were developed and it was meant to give us the latitude to develop them with your local public safety personnel and for us to kind of take that. See, so I guess I don't know if you just want more clear guidelines or?
For training, yes, for training and other agencies that can be involved and to have a unified purpose in that. So, for example, if the, if the police come to Coventry and they go to Exeter West Greenwich, there'd be a similar format for safety procedures and protocols? If there was a very horrific incident where out of district, police and fire had to go to another school district, it would be a completely foreign set of procedures to follow.
I do have to say one thing, because I did follow this legislation when it came through committee. The original draft of the bill did have clearly consistent procedures in every school and that was taken out because of predictability. In order to keep it unpredictable in each school, that way it couldn't be something that was tracked. There was, there was a lot of, there was a lot of input from law enforcement community on that type of a topic. And that was one of the underlying themes was to not make it such a cookie cutter approach everywhere because then it could be studied in MAC.
Yes, and each one of our-
Like you're talking about.
And each one of our current plans, there are elements in there that are not disclosed to the public for exactly that reason. What we do certainly gets it handled, yeah.
So I would go back to my original suggestion is that maybe we need to get the school committee, the Superintendent's Association and the Rhode Island E M A together and we can maybe work something out that would be mutually beneficial to all of us.
Thank you. Could I ask, yes?
My last comment and then I'll drop the issue. And I like Representative Noon's idea, but maybe I'm assuming too much, I'm assuming that the chiefs of police association and-
That was what I was going to ask the Colonel if he could just articulate as to Rhode Island police chiefs and how they handle their school systems within their state.
There's a lot of, you know, there's been an evolution of active shooter response at Columbine. And the current one, I think it's Alice training, which sort of provides a menu of options and active resistance, lockdown, information sharing. I think it's a collaborative effort and it constantly needs to be refreshed. I think the Western Coventry School kind of scare, which happened a few months ago, was just a reminder that, you know, we need to get together again as, you know, a team and sort of go after this and continually refresh our responsibilities. We just recently worked with the National Guard base here in town, it's not just schools, it's any soft target that's available. So I don't think there's one answer or one response, it's just continual, you know, gathering of people who stake hold.
Is there any recommendation to the, our reps of senators as to how you, chief of Coventry, or Superintendent of Coventry could use the state assistance?
I think the E M A is probably a good, you know, a good guy. You know, E M A is basically a framework that comes in over the top of an incident like that. A director, I'm sure, could provide some good guidance to the superintendents and the chiefs of police as a group. And certainly our firefighters will, will all be at a scene like that, trying to prosecute our way through it, which, you know, you can see from Sandy Hook, it's not just the incident, it's, you know, the aftermath.
Okay. Any further comments of the state delegation or?
Yes, Senator. A little bit from the department heads, I know usually they have some concerns. I know one issue is, what I wanted to ask the council on D O T, I know one issue that I had spoken to the police chief regarding Route 3 from Hartley Hill Road all the way down to St. John and Paul Church. Should the council request through us a study commission to look at expanding the center turn lane? Because I know in front of the post office, it's very dangerous making the turn into the post office and even further down Route 3. If they can continue what they did from Route 95 and West Greenwich all the way to Hartley Hill Road, continue that right through to St. John and Paul Church, to have that middle turn lane. There is a lot of businesses, Donalds, Burger King, The Plaza, the post office, Rampage, those are probably some of the critical areas. Would the council either pass a resolution or maybe discuss it in a later date, any D O T issues? That's one of them that I want to bring up. If there's anything else in town that we should bring up to D O T?
Well, Mr. Cabell, I could ask you, I know you're interim, but would you think any of our directors have any issues while the state delegation is here or have you conveyed them to the best of your knowledge?
I know I've conveyed some of the more major ones. I see Mr. McGee has some issues. I know Colonel McDonald has a couple of issues. So why don't we start with Colonel McDonald instead of looking at Mr. McGee?
Colonel, just on that point, I would support at least the exploration of a middle lane there. I know there's a lot of accidents out there. I was myself involved with a drunk driver playing the post office with a cruiser, so it's definitely worth looking into whether or not the middle lane would be beneficial for traffic calming, particularly coming in the high school area. The only other issues I had were, one was solicitation and peddlers. I know our ordinance are pretty strong with that, but we looked at whether or not that also applies to services like the recent person that scammed the elderly with the asphalt on driveways. And whether or not that state law is strong for people who are going up to our elderly and scamming them with their services and not just selling things. So I think it's worth looking at the law at the state level, whether or not it's strong enough. And then reexamining our ordinance to explore the services part of that as well. I think it's like a $200 fine for not getting your peddler's license. But a lot of the people that come into town are out of state or they're Connecticut or Massachusetts, so they don't, they won't necessarily show up to pay a $200 fine. Other than that, one other thing was Vincheck law. It's currently 10, it's capped at 10 for the fee schedule for Vinchecks. We do a lot of them and they have increased over the years with the amount of businesses we have in town, so we'd like to see that maybe bump to 20, just to give us the option to perhaps do a larger fee for out of town folks that come in and buy cars here at Coventry. Just, it's a little bit of an administrative burden on the P D for the front desk and his supervisors to do that while they're trying to monitor the radio and doing other things. So I can provide that law.
So this would be legislation that would allow municipalities to up the cost for the Vin inspections? Would there be something for all cities and towns or?
Some cities and towns actually charge more than town, I'm not sure 100%.
Okay, so that could be a Coventry legislation issue then?
Really, for us, I just wouldn't up it above the state law.
Okay.
But we would, I think, examine that for maybe 15, how residents, it just goes in as a general fund and would help us.
Apparently, the intent is to only charge more for the out of town.
That would be the 20 for the out of town. So you have a couple of businesses in town that are really the ones that come a lot to the P D to do our, to do our Vinchecks, they send a representative over, it's usually someone from out of town buying a car there, so they send that person that's running over and they have a few Vinchecks. So we can stack them up in the front hall during the hours and it's a little bit burdensome to us. Really, it would be translated to the person who's not in the car. And really, it's not a huge burden for a person to buy a car, maybe $175.
Thank you, Colonel. Mr. McGee, next up.
Thank you. Going back to the central attack of the case, town is in the process alone, now we're working with Jay Cribiano and Paul Sprague. We're developing our new transportation improvement program, the tip program, which has to be submitted by January 8th. And that's one of the items that we have previously spoke about, extending the sidewalks from South Main Street to Hartley Hill, paper companies and along the paper for that portion as one of our projects. So we're cognizant of that and we're working on that and that will be submitted as part of our tip program for the next 10 years for the state. Second, we have just been contacted by Rhode Island Resource Recovery. There's been a lot of issues with electronic waste, O T Vs, computers, things like that. What's happening is that the commodity markets are so low that a lot of the recyclers are getting inundated with those because they can't, they can't move them for the prices that they're moving for. Resource Recovery contacted the town of Coventry to ask us to be one of the five state collection centers. Currently, it's in West Greenwich and it's not being manned correctly, you know, the way that they normally need to have it manned and it's on a dirt parking lot. So they approached us to have the town become a resource. The largest company right now is handling about 90% of the state, has already dropped about 25% of the communities and it's continuing to go so that there's no more railways, just actually going to one of the five, five state collection centers, more of Resource Recovery. They're locating one by state law, one in each community, each community. And that will be the Kent County location, that's going to start on January 4th. What I'm asking for the legislators is to please consider Rhode Island Resource Recovery's legislation, they're going to be submitting, that is going to add printers to that list, which is the biggest problem, most of the recycling. You can bring your computer, your monitor and your keyboard, but you can't bring it further. And they're asking that to be included in that, to eliminate a lot of problems that some of these communities are already facing within the last two or three weeks. So if you can please, I think I'm not going to try and waste support from Resource Recovery. Thank you.
I guess Mr. McGee is done.
Yeah.
Would we go to another director?
Yes, I would ask your continued support of the East Coast Greenway and the bicycle walk path. D O T is slated to improve the two remaining bridges, Rebel Bridge, that are on that stretch from Summit Avenue to the Connecticut border. And I would just ask that you continue to support that. 2017, I believe, is the date at which they intend to begin that improvement. And additionally, wherever the roadways have a sufficient width, we'd like to consider bicycle paths, igual bicycle lanes. So I'd like you to support that as well.
Mr. Sprague, do you have any comments for the state delegation regarding planning and development department for the town?
Nothing at all.
Okay.
Pat Trulow, I don't know if she's, she's not here.
Mr. Tebow, of course.
Nothing, Mr. Spock.
Nothing. Yes, yes, of course. Mr. Rozika. I T, do you have any requests for our state delegation?
Just one, in reference to the recently changed identity theft law, gain through breach of network, computer network systems. The legislation, the way it was passed, leaves open determining if the networks were protected properly, very wide open, there's real no definition of what's protected, what's not protected. It doesn't even say who actually makes that determination. It also includes municipalities now under that law, leaving us potentially vulnerable to some very big fines if our network was somehow breached and somebody else is making the determination whether or not we adequately protected that network.
So if I understand, as it is right now, it's too loosely defined, there's been there not-
Very little, very little definition on what actually defines if equally protected network or adequately protected network, as well as it just, it, the, it just goes into that, really doesn't define who even makes the determination, never mind what, what has to be determined to be, well protected or inadequately protected.
So this is a fairly common occurrence throughout Rhode Island statues where definitions-
Fortunately, no.
Well, I mean, definitions in general can be very poor, so it sounds like this might be one of those instances where definition being adequate.
It is, and the thing is because of the number of data, the number of potential breaches, every, every individual, a good amount to, I believe it was a couple hundred dollar fine per. And that, I mean, with the number of people that we have in our system, I mean, we're talking a huge amount of potential fines for the town without any real definition on what the violation is and who even makes that determination, whether or not it was done correctly.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the state delegation before we go into public comment there? School committee, anything you can, I don't know. Okay. Well, all right, then, next on the agenda, we have a public comment on citizens that might be here attending. Mr. Jackson, maybe just if you could just stand in the state neighborhood.
Ken Jackson, 2799 Hartley Hill. You know, we're talking about spending tonight. Well, there's also about 80% of our budget is school, I believe, and I'm sure all cities and towns are about the same. We're tiny, we're a tiny state. Mr. Duxbury is absolutely right. We have 36 superintendents and supporting staffs. We need to cut that down, we need to get regionalized. Just to give you some picture of this, if we cut down eight to five supers, just five, it would be an 85% savings in costs. You still would keep the school boards all in position because the town, each town, city needs that. I mean, even if we went to 10 supers in supporting staff, you're talking over 60% savings. We're a small town, a small community, being Rhode Island, everybody in Rhode Island knows each other, I swear to God. I think that's one thing the legislation needs to look into. You know, the constant increase that every town and city faces with labor costs, teachers, supporting staff, so on and so forth, we need to bring that cost down. The people in our towns and communities, especially my age, we're living on social security and our savings, we need to save some money. And the best way is to shrink what you have out there. There's no reason, in fact, it's proven, Exeter, West Greenwich has what, one? Potting Gansett in, Foster Gloucesters, I view, Snowstorm. There's another one, one.
No, we have two.
There's two.
There's an elementary school in Foster and the state-
Oh, that's right, two. But still, if bringing a cost down, you know, we need to bring that cost down. We're never going to be able to level off the cost to teachers and supporting staff because that's ever increasing, as costs increase. So I would ask you to look into that. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Gore, do you have a name for this regional agency?
Don't stop that. Hey, Nick, Nick, go ahead. What is it?
They guarantee you they're not going to use it.
What was it, 100?
We couldn't spell it, we probably don't know how to say it.
Yes, yes, Representative Searp.
May I just make one comment in reference to that? You know, in theory, I couldn't agree with you more, but as we speak, and how long has it has been going on in our neighboring city of Warwick? on in our neighboring city of Warwick, where the school committee is trying to consolidate and save money? It goes, one of the high schools, Warwick Bets and Pilgrim, and all of the angst going on in the city of Warwick. So your theory is fantastic, but try to put it into practice and to get everybody engaged and in agreement. I mean, suppose you wanted to combine Coventry and Western Warwick?
No.
There you go. Would you want to be wizards or would you want to be okers?
No, but on the, but on the...
It's a great theory.
But Mr. Speaker, on the other side of it, okay, it's not just theory, it's, it's, if you, if we were a business, for example, okay, that's the world I've lived in, your biggest expense, which you make no money, no return, is overhead. That means from the chairman of the board down to the managers. Not the managers on the floor, I'm talking about senior managers. We have to cut costs. I know the unions are powerful in the state. They're a pain in the, anyway. But you hit against another point that's really very important, is the point that Warwick, and a couple other towns and cities in Rhode Island, in Massachusetts, in Connecticut, have had employees buying stuff for that community and it doesn't get there. Okay? That's something else we need to look into. We need to have laws to protect the taxpayers in every community against that. Okay? So the, the whole point is cut costs. You have to. And you have to prevent costs from going in the wrong places, shall I say. Okay? Yes, there is, there, it is a theory. But Texas has, just to show you, their districts are bigger than Rhode Island and they have one super.
I didn't say I disagree.
No, 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 I'm not, please don't, I'm not giving it that way to you. Okay? But...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ken Noberg, twenty-five North Flat Road. I live on what used to be Johnson's Pond and I guess is now Johnson Creek. And I was, I was under the impression that at some point I, they're zoning the floodplain like FEMA. Probably think specifically Johnson's Pond, guessing it's probably within the whole state. And this, I guess, is more of a question. If you live on, if you live on the town, you're probably getting the notice, if you're in that area, that you're going to need to get flood insurance now. Wondering if this is, if the, at the state level or at the town level, there's awareness of this and if there's any discussion being had of, of this rezoning, considering that I think it was understood with either a hundred year flood or five hundred year plus, something that hasn't happened really in history and why the, why the rezoning did happen, really, for like FEMA at federal, federal level, was any, any knowledge of that or why?
Thank you for the question. Mr. Gore. The mandate came from the federal government, and we had to adopt it by, I think, October one, or there were some kind of severe implications for the town. I can't remember what they were, but it alarmed me such that we, we had no choice but to adopt it. And you're right, it did change. It was good for some people and it was bad for others because it changed the overall map for what's deemed a flood zone and what is not. And for insurance purposes, that meant everything or means everything. So it's, it's not something that the town's really had a choice about. I, I used to hate when people said that with the General Assembly, that we have to do this. But really, with the supremacy clause, you know, the federal law is supreme. If they say you have to do it, you have to do it. I think we were going to lose some kind of federal funding or something.
I think, yes, I think, and also the usual ability to be insured.
That's true.
That was, yes. No one was going to be able to get insurance.
Flood insurance. The maps were redrawn by the federal government. They, they, they tell you that whatever the storm was, that doesn't necessarily mean that was the hundred-year storm. It's a, it's a calculation that's done almost every year based on new development and stuff like that. They redrew the maps nationally and required changes in every community's floodplain legislation. I happen to be serving as an interim manager in another community when they went through the same process. And really, it was like, well, what if they don't like that word? Well, then nobody can get flood insurance in your town. This was a call.
It's not a debatable topic that I'm...
Did, did your rates go up significantly?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's, we, we actually provided more notice just because we knew it was going to hit people in the council.
Yeah, but even with the notice, I mean, it's my, my mortgage, the mortgage company is really, the mortgage holder is actually, who's sending me a notice saying, hey, get flood insurance. I'm dropping your, I need to pay my mortgage now. It was certain percentage of that on the drive.
I believe that it was, that if the town did not pass what we did, a change in ordinance or resolution, that, that you would not be able to obtain the federally funded flood insurance or be subject to. And, but what I wanted to communicate is that if you were to call Paul Sprague at our planning department...
Or just yell over there?
I think he left. I think he just left. There is, there is some sort of certification that you can go through by getting an acquirer, sorry, a surveyor. And if you get that certification, and it has something to do with your structure, so forgive me, I don't know everything about it, but there is something that you may be able to do if you get that certification or, you know, the surveyor comes out, you may be able to be exempt from it. And Paul Sprague knows all the rules.
The ordinance to be adopted...
Excuse me, I'm going through that process right now. And the only way that that helps you, the certification, is a certification from an engineer that tells you that you are building, your structure is not in that hundred-year floodplain or two hundred.
That's correct.
If it's in the floodplain, you can have all the engineering you want, it's not going to matter.
That's correct. But what I'm getting at is that you may want to talk with Paul Sprague about that.
To validate.
Just to make sure that there is no option other than to get the flood insurance. Okay? And I don't happen to have his phone number handy, but...
And just, just for clarification, there was a statement made that town had to accept it in order to be able to receive federal flood insurance as opposed to if you didn't accept it.
It would allow you to obtain the federal flood insurance, which I think is at a much reduced...
That was my question, yes. So there is, okay, I need to look into that.
There are, there, there was at least one city or town that did not meet the deadline. Was it North Providence? And, and their residents, their residents were in a, a very difficult position. I don't know what they finally resolved.
Yeah, they, they...
But that's the reason why we did what we did, so that we would give you the option to be able to get a reduced cost on that flood insurance.
Flood insurance is coming regardless. So, so I guess my question is, we had to accept it as a town. FEMA was rewriting the maps and sending it out anyway. And in my financial institution that holds my, my mortgage, my house, was calling me regardless. It sounds uninterpretable.
Correct.
But it sounds like, as opposed to by accepting, I should be able to get a reduced rate.
That's my understanding, yes. And it was a federal, it was, it was a movement by the, by the FEMA, which is not something we can control. Our only, our only option was to make sure that we could give our residents that live here that had that issue the best opportunity they could to get flood insurance at, at a, hopefully a reasonable rate.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mike Aran, Sharron Drive. I called a number of you on the flood insurance issue. And is anybody from the state going to give us assistance to take a look at why the flood maps were changed to begin with? Why the elevation level was changed five feet?
I think the issue, I think the issue falls upon members of Congress. I know it's Representative Lanchin's office on November thirtieth, and I'm just waiting to hear back from him. I think the federal delegation also should contact FEMA and ask for some sort of probably overview of, there could be some adjustments to what took place here in Coventry. But I think it's up to the federal delegation to contact. I know they, I received an email back, and I believe Seth Kleiman is in contact with someone by the name of Jeff Killian from, I guess Homeland Security, which is under the Federal Emergency Management Agency, to look into this issue. So I'm going to contact them again and try to figure out where they are. It is the feds that should go back to FEMA and ask them, look, there's a burden on the residents, there's going to be more cost in, in flood insurance, what's going on here? So hopefully we can get an answer from all four members of our congressional delegation. I know Congressman Lanchin already reached out to us on November thirtieth.
I appreciate that.
I think I provided that email to someone, forwarded to someone.
I think what happened is the federal government, in their infamous wisdom, people who have never even stepped foot, probably don't even know where Coventry is, much less Johnson's Pond, redrew the maps.
Well, my question is, is why? Somebody looked at the watershed, somebody did a study of the watershed? So I'm asking, why was there a study done to begin with by FEMA? And why were the Loma maps, maps changed?
It's a fair question. And I do, I agree.
They did them nationally. That's my understanding.
It's a federal question.
They did it nationally. And the theory behind it was they were spending money each time there was a flood. Their houses were being rebuilt, and then they were losing more money on the flood insurance program. So they were being, they redrew the maps and are increasing the rates on the flood insurance so that when they pay out, then the, the program is theoretically, and I'm just saying theoretically, more sustainable.
So I get that. I mean, there's a lot of discussion about the five hundred year flood and the hundred year flood. I know exactly where my water line comes up. It's not going to come any higher because somebody changed something on the map. It's good on, it's not going to go any higher. So my, my argument is, is who's looking at the spillway in the town? Who's looking at the dam in the town as far as why the elevations were changed? Did they do the study based on that the gates were closed or the gates were open at the time when they did the study? Why was the study done at all? And can the town challenge the study?
No, the town can't challenge the study.
They cannot?
It was done nationally. I believe the state was involved, but I could not tell you how they were involved.
So the, so the town has no recourse to go back and challenge this and say, we'll do our own study based on, on the watershed? Is that because of money?
No.
Because of amendment.
Federal laws.
Oh. At the end of the day, you can challenge that particular study for the watershed, no?
Well, members of Congress can make an amendment to that federal law. They can go back and look at, because I think it's not just Rhode Island, it has to be Connecticut, it's got to be all the states.
I'm sure there's a lot of waters here.
So I believe that if we send, again, contact our federal delegation, look, there's a problem in Rhode Island, there's going to be a problem in other states, look into it, go back to the drawing board and take a look with FEMA. Don't allow FEMA, FEMA's a bureaucratic agency. Congress controls FEMA. So I would think that the members of our delegation throughout our, the United States should go back to FEMA and say, look, what did you do here? You're costing the homeowners a lot more money.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Martha Bowman, thirty-one Elton Street. I actually have a, I don't know if anyone can answer this for me, but I was wondering, actually, what made me think of this is number six on the agenda tonight, which was the RIDOT being responsible for maintaining improvements on the public right of way. I'm just wondering, who's responsible for improving and maintaining DOT-owned stormwater outfalls? Specifically, there's one on Eastshore Drive at the bottom of Middle Road. It's DOT P A W T seven oh seven. It's basically a storm drain, and it runs up across private property into Tyre Lake. So what's happened, basically, is DEM has given a permit for the private homeowner to bury a pipe in, in BMP best management practices, Rick Raff and whatnot, basically allowing that homeowner to do it. And then in the meantime, what's happening is that homeowner actually wants to take the public right of way and move that public right of way to that exact location, basically moving the public to walk over the best management practices. And it turns out, this is a DOT. This is different from some of the other stormwater outfalls on Eastshore Drive, which are town. I don't know if anybody can answer that question for me.
I can tell you specifically that DEM is the officiated body over anything that has to do, especially when you're, when you're depositing stormwater into an existing body of water. So they will govern anything that would be able, they'll permit whomever it is who's doing it. Sounds like if you're saying that they've permitted the homeowner to do the work as opposed to the state, which it sounds like probably the state should be doing it if it's on, if it's the state's culprit that they put in. What troubles me is, is what you stated about the right of way. What is the right of way to and from? Is it from the road to?
It's from the road to Tyre Lake. It's a, it's a ten-foot pathway.
And is it for recreational, is it for motors? Is it for people that access the water?
It's, it's, it's just a neighborhood thing. It's, it's there. It's basically labeled ten-foot pathway on a flat.
And who owns that? Is that town, a town right of way? Because they would be the only one who could, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Sprague, receive their rights as to whether or not a right of way can be evaporated here and then relocated here. Only the town can do that.
Right.
So if someone relocated that without the, the authority of the town, they've done a violation.
Does the town have the right to do that even though it's a DOT out for?
That, well, the DOT, I mean, DOT's aspect is, is from, from my perspective, from this conversation, is more of a financial. They're responsible for making sure that the work is done. I would, I would, that would be my feeling. DEM has the regulatory oversight. Whether or not that, that right of way can be moved is the town. So now we have three separate entities. I think DEM is probably well within what you could expect from DEM. They don't ever let nothing pass. Whether or not the town has any awareness of this, I can't answer that. The town fathers can answer that. But the, the, the DOT, responsibly for the, for the fiscal aspect of it, we get an answer on that.
That sounds like it beyond highway safety, Joe Bouchette at DOT. That's, that's what that sounds like, beyond...
Well, it's still overseen by DEM because you're dumping water into a, into public body of water. I think DEM is jealous of the guards there, there.
Does that sound right, though, that a private property owner...
It sounds funny.
They have the right to tie into, they're basically tying into something that's supposed to be the...
It doesn't sound right. It doesn't sound like the type of thing that, that DEM...
I don't know, anybody watching that, just to be honest, we don't like what we've seen going on down there as far as what they have the right to do with the service.
Maybe after the meeting, you can just give me the, the address and I can just do some ask questions on that for you. Okay?
Mr. President, I had asked, with your permission, somebody, I reached out to DEM, and I'm not sure, is there somebody here from the Department of Environmental Management here tonight? No? No. I guess I invited him here to answer that question specifically, but I guess not you.
Yes?
If I may, I have my state here.
Could you just give us your name?
Charlotte Porter, twenty-sixth Sandra Circle. I've been calling DEM for the last four years. I have two asphalt plants at four hundred feet away from me. And they tell me they're short-staffed and they cannot send inspectors down. And when I say the smell is offensive, offensive, it's like you're going down the street, then towering the street. What do you do? Roll your window up because the smell is offensive. I cannot open my windows. I cannot sit on my porch. I cannot go outside. And when I do call DEM, I have called them two hundred and forty-five times in four years. And we don't see them. And when I ask, they say they're short-staffed. But I was wondering if anybody knows what I could do about that.
I'm never going to be a person who defends the actions of DEM when it comes to the things of this. I can, I can tell you this, though, I, I did have the opportunity to sit on the special legislative commission overseeing the landfill when there were the issues with, with the methane gas. That was a real problem in the state. One of the things we did learn was that their air quality monitoring systems were so woefully inadequate in, in number and also in qualified personnel to actually utilize the equipment that they could not even do it for the landfill. That's just one. Yeah, I'm sure it's, it's a giant scheme out, but it was just one location. They were not able to do that. So it's not out of character for them, for you to have gotten that response. Is it acceptable? No, I mean, it's a quality of life issue for you. It's, it could be a health issue for you. There are measures in place where they, they have an obligation... There are measures in place where they, they have an obligation to perform air, air quality monitoring. Um, this does sound like it would be one of those cases. Again, I, I, I think if we put your address, we could certainly poke a prod at D.E.M. and find out what's going on.
Thank you.
The other issue is, we could also continue the discussion on the asphalt plants. I know several years ago, we had introduced legislation, Senator Kettleman had passed to regulate any new asphalt plants in that area. But I think with the council and the General Assembly delegation, there's, I think, other piece of legislation we can look at, into, to try to even regulate the asphalt plants even further.
I said like regulating them right out of town.
Okay, then, uh, mine. I guess, uh, yes. May I hand something to the legislators? Excuse me?
Can I hand something out?
Sure, just tell them who you are, I guess it's all right.
Jennifer Bacon, sixteen minutes south away. Good evening. The handout I just gave to everyone, a free Facebook post that two of our elected school committee members posted within the past year. I believe these posts are inappropriate and have crossed along. Two of the posts were brought to the attention of the school committee during the June twenty-third, two thousand fifteen school committee meeting. In response, Chairwoman Patnold explained that there is nothing she could do and that the school committee members can post whatever they want. Her suggestion was, if someone does not like the post, then vote the school committee member out or recall them. She is right in the sense that the Rhode Island General Law, section sixteen dash two dash nine point one, Code of Basic Management Principles and Ethical School Standards, which governs school committees, this section does not address the issues of cyber ethics and cyber citizenship, and that needs to change. This brings me to some relatively new terms, cyber ethics and cyber citizenship, which refer to responsible cyber social behavior. These terms refer to what people do online when no one else is looking. Cyber ethics, for instance, refers to the Code of Responsible Behavior on the Internet, just as we are taught to act responsibly every day. Life, we must act responsibly and the cyber world as well. We must ensure that our elected officials and including school committee members understand their responsibilities for conducting themselves appropriately online and that there are penalties. If students, teachers, administrators are held accountable and have consequences for what they post, shouldn't our elected officials, including school committee members? If you think these posts are appropriate, please post them and tweet them to your constituents tonight. But if you believe these posted cross the line, then I urge you all in the two thousand sixteen session to create and pass cyber ethics and cyber citizenship accountability legislation, which would also include a penalty and discipline in the Code of Ethics for all elected officials in our state, including school committee members. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Deb. Would you provide it to us? And looking through it, I, I step back and think of prior to being elected into office and, uh, behavior and the expectations of those around me. Being elected and, as you said, being held to a higher expectation and standard, social media is, is a blessing and sometimes it's, it's completely a disaster in certain circumstances in communicating to those that we serve. An example of a blessing is what the chief had said when he posts out sex offenders. We retweet that or we resend that back out to the community as notification. As a school committee member, as any elected official, I do believe we must be extremely appropriate on what we say and what we do because not only do we represent ourselves, we represent those who have elected us. And I do agree that this type of behavior has to have some sort of oversight and, and disciplinary action on. So in doing so, I, I will reach out to you and sit down and, and go over, and go over this because this is of great concern and.
Let me, let me explain this, Representative. I posted something on Facebook. My cousin died in World Trade Center. Now, Donald Trump is saying the same thing that I wrote, that I put on my Facebook page. You have an issue with that?
Uh, I do actually.
I thought you may, I thought you may.
Thank you for bringing that up. Um, I actually do on a political, um, let's say, let's, thank you, David.
You're welcome, sir.
Um, I do believe that we are expected to say and do things that are appropriate and that aren't insulting or insensitive in terms of messaging.
That was not insulting and that was not insensitive.
In messaging, it wasn't insulting or insensitive to maybe.
Well, it's insensitive to the people in my district.
Well, what you have to understand is, is that you have to look at a large outlook as a community. Anytime we say and do something, we need to take a step back and evaluate, is this appropriate? And it wasn't appropriate to the person who's bringing it to our attention.
I didn't put it on her Facebook page because she's not a Facebook client.
It's, it's out in social media, David, and when it's out in social media, we need to acknowledge the appropriate way we behave as elected officials.
I do, sir, all the time.
Okay. It was offensive. Any, anytime something comes out.
Oh, so, so you're in favor of Muslims, sir? You're in favor of that they think.
Whoa, 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 he's got on a hand, oh.
Yeah, I think. I'm sorry. I'm not caring what I post.
Thank you, Deb, for bringing that to our attention.
I think, I'll take a motion, I think it is time to adjourn.
I think so.
Second? Do I have a second to adjourn?
I need to.
I didn't have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you have to.
How do you like to move your mic to the speaker?
Thank you.
Your second.
Yeah. Excuse me. Very good, Deb. Very good.
Next Monday, twenty-nine.